First order of business, I have a motion to certify the just now closed session of June 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley? Excuse me. Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, we have two motions to consider.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the following resolution, a resolution appointing Patrick Duhany as city manager, effective July 20th, 2020.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, call for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley? Is that aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you appointed Mr. Duhany as the city manager, beginning July 20th.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, we have another resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval and ordinance approving an employment contract with Patrick Duhany as the new city manager, effective July 20th, 2020 through July 19th, 2022.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Ready for the vote? The parlor one?
Mrs. Hen?
Oh, I'm just gonna say, I support the appointment, but as I have constantly said, public salaries mean public service, and this compensation exceeds my standard of public service, so I'm not voting for the contract.
Yes, I am a little shocked when I walked in here and saw this newspaper article on the desk. I would just say, I hope we will find a way to make some suggestions to the next city council. I know it's not anything that we can do, to find a way to open this process. I know there has to be some confidentiality, apparently confidentiality didn't go all the way to the end. But this is the most important decision we make, and it's very difficult to make it in such a closed fashion and not be able to have any input from any others. I've got to think that there's a way that we can bring some other input into the process, so it's not just strictly a political decision. I just feel like there's gotta be a better way. And I'm sorry, I'm also very, very convinced that the contract and the contract provisions, the council should have discussion and input in that before the offer is made, and I didn't have any input, and therefore I will not be supported.
Anyone else at this point? Okay, if we can call for us.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Nay.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of nine to two, you have approved the resolution regarding the employment contract.
Okay.
Ordinance.
I'm sorry, ordinance. Thank you. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, I believe our new city manager might be available.
Give us just a second to have him pull, to pull him up. Mr. Duhany?
How you doing, everybody? Hi, everybody. How are you?
Just read a little bit of an introduction about you. Patrick Duhany has been city manager for Cincinnati, Ohio since 2018. He previously served as the city's assistant city manager and chief procurement officer. He currently serves on the Cincinnati Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, and is a member of Local Initiative Support Corporation's Emerging Leaders Council in New York. He holds a bachelor's degree in sociology and urban studies from Cleveland State University, and a master's degree in community planning from the University of Cincinnati. He was a sergeant in the U.S. Army and U.S. National Guard. His service includes 18 months in a combat environment. Patrick has deep knowledge and experience with community engagement, economic development, public finance management, and the challenges of facing large cities. We are impressed with his energy, his demonstrated commitment to transparency, and his strong desire to really listen to our residents and work with us to chart our future. Unfortunately, Patrick was unable to be here today, but he's able to join us remotely. Patrick, welcome to Virginia Beach.
Counsel, thank you very much. I'm truly and honestly honored to be appointed to this role, and I will do everything in my power to work hard for you all, as well as the residents and the employees of Virginia Beach, and work to help solve all the challenges and help ensure the success of Virginia Beach for years to come.
Mr. Wood would like to read something.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to read this. I mean, obviously, they can't keep secrets in Cincinnati, and that's okay. But it's very interesting that I read this, the letter from the mayor to Mr. Duhany, when he heard about his taking this job or intending to take this job. "I am heartbroken. You have been by far the best manager I have ever worked with. Impeccable integrity and constant professionalism. You are a servant leader that is able to lead by moral force and conviction-based resolve. Cincinnati will emerge from my trifecta of crises because of your amazing hard work and effectiveness. In fact, I believe your career is a rocket ship and will make us all proud by our association with you, as you will forge a continued path of historic public service to our country." So those are really nice words from his soon-to-be former employer, and I think that certainly bodes well for us.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Duhany, is there any other comment you would like to make to your new family, city council, and the residents of Virginia Beach?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for calling it a new family. That's truly what I feel like it's gonna be. You know, I think I'm gonna treat Virginia Beach as if it is my family. I'm gonna honor it and treat it with integrity, and be open and as transparent as possible in my dealings to ensure that everybody gets a sense of how the city is operating. And again, I am truly honored and humbled by this appointment, and I will do everything in my power to hold it up with grace and integrity, and never let it be something that you all were ashamed that you all have done. So thank you again, and I truly appreciate the opportunity to serve Virginia Beach.
All right. Any comment? All right, thank you. Yes.
I mean, we did choose him, but you have to remember, he also chose us.
Right. Yes.
So that's really a good thing to keep in mind.
No, and I'll tell you what, you know, we're just delighted, and, you know, heartfelt welcome. And thank you very much. Okay? Okay? Yep, Mr. Rouse?
Mr. Duhany, if you're still there, you know, as a native of Virginia Beach, just wanna say, oh, welcome to our city as the mayor. So eloquently put it. I'm excited to be able to work with you. I'm excited, you know, that you have chosen us, as our councilwoman Wilson has stated. And I can't wait for you to get here to help Virginia Beach and continuously help us go to the next level. So I'm really excited to have you on board, and thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Tower?
I certainly endorse what Councilman Rouse just said, but I wanted to say a thank you to a couple of people to...
Mr. Tower?
I certainly... I'm here.
Here are you.
A little feedback here, you know?
I'd like to give a little shout-out to Regina Hilliard, our human resources director. I thought she managed the process with grace and dignity, and it's not an easy process to help with. And our consultants, Gov HR, did an excellent job. We were blessed with a number of very, very qualified candidates. And the decision to hire was one that was very easy to make in the sense that we had a plethora of candidates that were qualified to work here. And I'm happy to have Patrick here, but there were other very excellent candidates. So Regina and Gov HR, thank you for the work you did in helping us manage the process. I'll also tip my hat to the mayor and the vice mayor for taking the lead in this process, too. I thought they did an excellent job as well.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, and thank you very much. Once again, welcome, Patrick. And at this point, I adjourn the special session, adjourn the special session, and we will now call to order, you know, the regular session at this point, okay? So at this point, I think we're ready for the city manager's briefings.
Yes, Mayor and members of council, as you know, the city is beginning to open up in phases aligned with the governor's Forward Virginia initiatives. And so we have three of our very, three of our departments that have a lot of interaction with our public and provide a lot of services to our residents, and they're going to give you a review of their opening plans. So I'd like to start out first with Cynthia Whitbread-Spinolus, the director of the Virginia Aquarium.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to share our reopening plan for the Virginia Aquarium. And I'll wait just a second here. There we go. Of course, we are reopening in waves. Of course, we always like to do things that are fun and exciting, so our reopening plan are in waves. And so today, I'll share wave one with each of you. So basically, we reopened yesterday with a soft reopening for our members only. This will run through Thursday of this week. We are reopening to the public on Friday, and I'll go through the details with you in a moment on how that will work. Of course, we want to keep in mind, our first and foremost mission is to keep our animals, our staff, our volunteers, and of course, our guests safe. And so our plan will entail most of those items. Very quickly and briefly, I'll go through each of these items, how you purchase your tickets online, how the tickets are timed for every 30 minutes, a one-way path through the aquarium. Some of our exhibits and temporary experiences will be limited. We will, of course, have six-foot distancing, touch-free processing for your ticketing. I'll talk a little bit about that. All of our guests, staff, volunteers will have a face covering. We've added additional sanitation stations, and we will not sell tickets between 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock every day, so we can do additional deep cleaning. So let me just run through what's changing overall. Our summer hours will remain the same. We are open 9:00 to 6:00 through the summer, but it's gonna be very different. Online reservations only for our members, and timed tickets for those that are purchasing a ticket. This will ensure that we will have a touch-free payment processing system. And of course, we will be limiting those tickets. We will actually be only selling 100 tickets, or having space available of 100 tickets per half an hour. Of course, as I mentioned, our guests, our staff, and our volunteers will be wearing face coverings, and we will have signage. We'll have one-way paths, and I'll show you a map in just a moment throughout the aquarium, so you can only go one way through the aquarium. And once you complete your one-way path during this wave one, that will be the end of your visit. You will not be able to, in the past, you've been able to visit and spend, go through as many times as you want, but during wave one, we will limit that. We will have increased sanitation throughout, and we will have a, of course, we will have an additional gift shop in our promenade, so that we won't have our main gift shop be quite as crowded. And of course, it provides an opportunity for additional sales for us. Each of you have a fish scale face mask that I hope you'll enjoy. Those are for sale at our gift shop, so hopefully you'll also model those and encourage people to visit us and purchase those. So we will not have, some of our experiences will be very different. There will be no summer camps or school programs on-site. We will not be doing any behind-the-scenes tours or any animal feeding, scheduled animal feedings. We will not have our touch pools open, and many people have asked me, why are you not allowing your touch pools open? It's not because we don't want people to touch our animals or our animals to be touched. Rather, it's a congregation point for people, and so we want to ensure that we're not having people congregate. Of course, our giant screen theater is closed due to budget cuts, and of course, it's closed permanently. But our cafe and our snack stand will be temporarily closed during wave one. Here are some of our signs that you can expect to see as you go through the aquarium. We wanted to use some bright colors so they stand out for people, but we still wanted people to have fun and be entertained and be educated. So you see some of the sanitation station signs. And for those of you that didn't know, a sandbar shark is about six feet long, so we're asking people to stay about a shark apart, and we thought that was cute, but educational, and it ensures the safety. Some additional signage that you can see. Here's a map of the aquarium, so it is a one-way path only as you go through. When you reach the promenade area, you will actually go through our promenade room, through the shark and sea turtles, whereas before, that was more of a free-flowing area. And then you'll exit out through our gift shop as before. Again, we're not allowing any re-entry during this time. So new ticketing process. So we are selling tickets in three-week increments. As we go through the phases, we're not sure how long each of these phases will last. So we're selling tickets in three-week increments. So you go online, you buy your timed ticket, you download that to your phone, or you can print that at home. When you arrive, you either show your phone, or if you have your piece of paper, you can show your piece of paper, and that's how you will gain entry. Of course, this is an educational process for all of our guests, as well as our members, because if you are a member, as many of you are, you know that you can come at any time throughout the day. And so now, you actually have to have a timed entry as a member. It will be, of course, free with your membership, however, it will have to be a specific time. So we're really excited about some of our marketing and advertising, welcoming our guests back, and educating them on some of these changes. We have a fabulous new VP of Marketing, Natalie Sims, and she's here with us today, and she's created a lot of these new creative. So of course, we have Where Have You Been?, the sad little face of our seal there, excited to have people back, and then our turtle, who's excited to have people come back. Some of our social media, Instagram, advertising here. Some of our favorite animals showing here, showing that members only, June 15th through the 18th. And then again, this Friday, we'll reopen to the public with those timed tickets. And then, of course, educating our members, so we'll do a special mailer. This postcard has gone out to all of our members, and it welcomes them back, but it also gives them the procedures that they'll need to follow in order to get a ticket. And then, of course, once they're on-site, some of the things they'll need to follow. And so we have a quick, one-minute video to show you that basically shows you everything that I just mentioned.
Okay, Mr. Tower?
Thank you, Ms. Spinolus, for a great presentation. I just want to say a couple of things. One, the creative work on this just blew me away. I thought it was the coolest thing I've ever seen. This is my Where Have You Been? face. It's really, really good, and kudos for that. And second, I just wanted to urge all of the citizens who are listening to this, this is a great opportunity, whether you're a member or a ticket buyer, to be at the aquarium without the crowds. And this time of year, normally, it's pretty crowded, and by design, we're not gonna be crowded for a while. So get your tickets, tell your friends, take advantage of being able to see this beautiful, beautiful aquarium without crowds in a very, very different kind of situation that you probably will not normally have for this time of year. So I urge everybody, get out there and take advantage of it before we phase to the next phase and the crowds come back. Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Tower. I want to recognize Councilman Tower and Councilman Berlucci. They spent some time virtually with me in early May on a call to understand some of the things that the aquarium was planning, and some of the challenges that we have ahead. And so each of them spent quite a bit of time with me through virtual WebEx, and I appreciate both of them taking the time to understand some of the exciting things we have in our future, but some of the challenges that we have as well, so...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Look forward to seeing everybody in their, in your fish scale mask at the Virginia Aquarium.
Thank you again.
Okay, so council, the next up is our director of libraries, Eva Poole. And while we're getting set up, I would just like to thank Ms. Whitbread-Spinolus, Eva Poole, and Michael Kirschman for all the really incredible, hard work that goes into these opening plans, as well as their deputy, Ken Chandler, and then Aaron Sutton and her staff, who had to go over them and make sure they were all consistent with the state of Virginia guidelines, our own guidelines, and the CDC guidelines. So tremendous amount of work went into this, and I want to thank all of them.
Thank you.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of city council. Thanks for the opportunity to share Virginia Beach Public Library's phased reopening plan. From our phased reopening plan has been developed using guidance from federal and state COVID-19 recovery plans, the City of Virginia Beach Reintegration Phasing Scenarios, the American Library Association, and the Institute of Exams and Library Services. Knowing that our library system is a public place, open to all, regardless of background or social status, we followed the latest public health guidance to develop safe protocols for library services aimed at protecting our frontline staff, while also ensuring the safety of our customers. Our primary consideration was to develop a carefully phased approach that will eventually get us back to full library service at the appropriate time. The library's reopening plan builds upon the virtual services we have offered since our buildings closed on March 16th due to COVID-19. For the last three months, our strategy has been to increase access to our digital collection by doubling the number of monthly checkouts for popular resources and adding new resources. We also removed barriers to access, such as automatically renewing accounts that were set to expire. We removed blocks on accounts and created a digital-only library account for new customers to get by phone. And we quickly launched virtual programs, such as children's storytimes and adult book groups. And we maintain our telephone and email reference services to assist customers with research and other questions. As you might expect, the number of active digital users from March 16th to May 31st is up 20% over the same time last year, and digital checkouts are up 43%. While our buildings have been closed, staff has issued more than 300 new digital-only library accounts over the phone, and have answered more than 6,000 questions by phone, email, and social media. Our special services staff increased the number of talking books mailed by 156% over the same period in 2019. Our programming team has offered more than 50 online programs from mid-March through May 31st, with a viewership of more than 3,500. Our customers have sent us pictures of their children watching our storytime programs, which continue to be popular even while we are closed. This month, we're offering 80 live and on-demand programs, including some featuring several of you as guest readers. As we begin to open our buildings for some services, we will continue online programming. Since April, our staff members have been using our 3D printers and supplies to create face shields for the city's first responders. And on June 2nd, we delivered another set of 150, which included our 600th face shield. All libraries prepare to reopen. Staff continues to create 3D-printed PPE for some of our staff to wear. With our buildings closed to the public, staff has updated public spaces, including adding a mural in the recently renovated Central Library Children's Room. Staff has also been deep cleaning and rearranging the spaces to better accommodate and welcome customers when we reopen our doors. Throughout our building closure, we received much feedback from customers who appreciate the increased digital offerings and let us know how much they miss interacting with our staff members face-to-face. They also very much want to know two things. When will libraries reopen, and where can I pick up my holds? As much as our community appreciates digital services, they still want to read and hold print materials and participate in programs in person. We are eager to open our doors again, cautiously and with expert advice to ensure that our library locations remain safe, including working to establish health and safety protocols for staff, setting social distancing requirements for customers, and developing processes for sanitizing materials. As we reopen our physical spaces, customers can anticipate several adjustments, such as limited access to our buildings, restrictions on the number of people inside our facilities, additional cleaning procedures, reduced number of public computers to support physical distancing, use of face coverings and other personal protective equipment, and our unwavering commitment to providing needed resources to all. Each of the services I'm going to talk about now are in addition to the services that we've been providing since we closed in mid-March. As a first step, we received permission from acting city manager Tom Leahy to begin accepting materials using our automated returns at seven branches last week. We had over 78,000 items checked out since March 16th. On June 8th, the first day to accept materials, we received nearly 5,000 items. Staff has extensive guidelines for managing the materials, including a quarantine period. On Monday, June 22nd, at all library locations, except the Law Library, which opening date is contingent upon courts, we'll reopen. Customers will be able to... Customers will be able to pick up their holds through our lobby service and drive-up windows at Bayside, Oceanfront, and Princess Anne Libraries, and return their materials at all locations. Hours of operation will be Monday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. We will allow new holds to be placed by customers, and email notifications for available holds will resume. On July 20th, we will reopen Bayside, Central, Kempsville, and Princess Anne, and our Law Library locations for select services, including full library card registrations, limited computer use, printing and faxing, voter registration, and summer reading challenge prize pickup. The Joint Use Library is reopening contingent on the state. Children's rooms will reopen at Central and Bayside, and the teen room at Central will remain closed while teen spaces at the other locations are open for browsing. Our meeting rooms and study rooms will be closed. Beginning August 10th, all libraries will be open, except for the Joint Use Library, which reopening date is dependent on the state. All of our children's rooms will be open at all locations, except for those at Kempsville, Princess Anne, Great Neck, and Windsor Woods, due to their closed floor plans and size of their spaces. Our teen spaces will be open at all locations except at Central, again, because it remains closed due to the enclosed space. And we will begin to offer some in-person programming for adults and teens. Our meeting rooms and study rooms will remain closed. We don't have dates set for additional services, however, we will continue to monitor local, regional, and federal guidelines, again, with the safety of our staff and customers as our priority, and continue phasing in services until we resume normal operations. Our top priority and concern will always be the health and safety of our library staff and the community we serve. So here are the safety measures we're taking as we value our staff, volunteers, and our customers. Some staff will continue teleworking, and we will rotate their schedules. Materials will be quarantined for 72 hours upon receipt. We'll have sneeze guards added at all of our customer service desks. We are posting city-provided social distancing and handwashing signage. And we're removing the high-touch items from our children's areas, especially roping off those items that are too big to remove. And then we're working with our volunteers virtually until we are fully reopened. Our details are approved. Once they are approved, we will be working with city communications to share details with the public. We will continue working with media partners to promote our library resources and programs. We will continue managing our web and social media presences, which have been serving as programming platforms in addition to our public information channels. We will also use email and text messaging platforms to directly inform our customers. And when our buildings are open, we will use signage to help maintain and generate awareness of our staff settings for all. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Eva. Anybody have any questions at all for Eva? Aaron. Mr. Rouse, and then Mr. Moss.
I have a question. Just want to say thank you, Eva. Our libraries are so important for our community. I know my daughter enjoys going to the library quite often to get books, as well as they serve a unique opportunity and an area of interest for our elderly who love to read and check out books. And I think it's very important that we have this in our community, and we're so fortunate to have you as Director here and leading the way. So thank you for all your work that you do for our libraries, and I hope your shoulder gets better.
Thank you, Councilman Spinelz.
Thank you. Mr. Moss.
First of all, thank you for your brief. I was just curious, are you going to have light signages for your stacks like aquarium, like grocery stores? Here's the one-way and some patterned things and signage in your... I realize some libraries are very small, and that wouldn't be very productive. But in the Central Library, clearly, you are going to have some signage there.
Yes, sir, we are.
And your large print service that you do? I know many elderly who love that large print service that comes out of the library service. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Eva, thank you for your magnificent work. Okay, Mr. Tower.
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, perhaps it's because people know that I'm a longtime library geek. I've loved libraries since I learned to read and even before. And I've been on the library board here and the library board foundation board. But I can tell you that of all the services that were curtailed because of COVID, the one that I've gotten the most mail for has been the library. People are both appreciative of the step up in the digital services that were available, but they all... The sign that says, "When are you going to open?", that's... I've gotten numerous calls about that, so I'm really delighted we're on schedule. I appreciate all the work that went into it. Thank you, Eva.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
So council, our next up would be Michael Kirschman, the Director of Parks and Recreation.
Welcome, Michael.
Welcome. Thank you. I'm very excited to be here today. It's been a long couple of weeks, as we have planned to reopen the recreation centers. With me as well is Shirley Dibler and Tracy Goji, and they and their teams have worked extensively on this plan for quite some time. The reality is, if we were just an aquatic center, or just a fitness center, or just childcare, we'd have specific guidelines, but we are all those things and more. So it's quite a complex plan with a lot of moving parts, but we are here and ready to go. So without further ado, I'm going to dive right into the plans for the recreation centers. So we will, of course, follow or exceed all state and federal guidelines by the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health for all those facilities. How are things going to be different? Well, in a nutshell, unfortunately, the visitor experience at our rec centers is going to be very different moving forward for the foreseeable future as we live with COVID. The biggest change will be that no longer can the public just drop in to our rec centers. And that's going to be a big difference. People are used to coming into our rec centers and socializing, hanging out for a couple hours, doing multiple activities. And really, our rec centers serve as these community gathering spots. That would not be possible under the current plan for at least a while. What will happen is, for the amenities that will be opened, and we'll get to that in just a second, for the amenities that will be open, the public will have to register online for a timed slot to use that amenity. And that will enable us to manage the crowds and to manage how many people can be in each space at once. So for instance, if you want to come use the pool, you will register online. There'll be no transactions in person. Register online, you'll come swim your laps, you will leave. Next group comes in after that group leaves. Same for the fitness center, same for the gymnasium. All transactions online, everything at timed spots. There'll be greatly reduced capacities, and we will exceed those capacities in nearly all areas. So for instance, state guidelines are 30% capacity for our fitness center areas. That means we can fit about 25 people in most of those areas. We're going to do 20. State guidelines say you can have three swimmers per lane in the pools. We're going to do two or one, depending on the location, and not start with three. Again, we will exceed all the guidelines. I'll talk in a minute about what's closed and what's not. Also, what's different for us is indoor exercising has a 10-foot social distancing requirement, not six-foot. So we are required to maintain 10-foot of social distancing in all the areas while our visitors are exercising, and we will do that. Again, we'll have staggered start and leaving times. We will have multiple entrances where possible, again, to stop any stacking outside, people waiting to get in. And we will have all of our staff wearing masks, per state guidelines. Residents will need to do a little self-screen, ask themselves a series of questions before they walk in the doors, and if they answer yes to these questions, we would hope that they do not walk in. We will also have hand sanitizers located throughout the building. So what's open and what's closed? These are the areas that will be open with limitations. Our weight rooms will be open. The pools will be open with limitations. Our gymnasiums will be open with limitations. The racquetball courts, the group exercise rooms, a part of the game room, and the restrooms will be open. What won't be open? Quite a few things. Anywhere people congregate, the snack areas will be closed, the lobby seating areas will be removed. We're not going to have a lot of people hanging out in the lobby. They're going to be coming in, walking to their area, doing their exercise, going to their class, then exiting the building. The walking tracks and aqua tracks will be closed at this time. Per state guidelines, all water features are closed, including the spray ground at Williams Farm. Indoor playgrounds and slides will be closed, the diving boards will be closed, the lockers, locker rooms, and showers will be unavailable. We will also not provide free weights. We could if we were allowed to, but we just can't clean the free weights in between each group session. We can't clean every dumbbell and free weight, so at this time, they will remain off limits. As well as the Williams Farm Teen Media Studio. We will have no childcare during this first phase. We will not offer any room rentals, and we will not be offering any high-contact sports, such as basketball, volleyball, or soccer. Pretty much in the gymnasium, we're going to be sticking to pickleball, badminton, table tennis, those types of activities. Indoor specialty camps and special events, as well as all senior programming, is currently suspended, as well as all therapeutic recreation programming for the summer. But we will be doing virtual online activities for those populations. So again, as I said, everything's online. There'll be no transactions at the front desk. If you're a member, you'll go online, click your timed spots you want to come in and do your workout or swim your laps, go to a class. We will have staff at the front desk to answer the calls and answer questions, but there'll just be no transactions. We're not selling memberships, taking money, scanning your cards at the front desks. We will hold off on any new memberships at this time, just until we can do a demand analysis and see, can we meet the needs of our current members before taking on new members? After about one month, we'll have a good handle on how that goes. We do have very much enhanced cleaning going on throughout the building, and we'll have staff in all the areas to maintain physical distancing for all the visitors. We'll have modified hours to start. These times could vary as we go through, depending on our staffing levels. We will have additional staff needed with additional entrances, so we won't be able to be open our current schedule. But there's the hours that we'll be opening to start. And as I said earlier, we will have reduced capacity in all the areas. In the fitness room, you'll be able to use the cardio equipment, you'll be able to use the circuit equipment, you will not be able to use the free weights. You'll be signing up for your timed slots. A group of 20 people come in, they work out, they need to wipe down behind them, but even when they leave, our staff will wipe down all the circuit equipment and cardio equipment that was used before the next group comes in. So we've timed it, we can do that in 15 minutes. So it'll be a clean... Any group that comes in, it's going to be a clean place to come in. We will have certain equipment blocked off. So for instance, every other treadmill is blocked off. The next day, we'll open up that treadmill and block off the other treadmills, just to make sure it's even wear and tear on the equipment. And as I said earlier, free weights, dumbbells, and any shared equipment, such as mats, bands, will not be used or available.
Mr. Rouse.
I'll wait till Mr. Kirschman's finished with his presentation. Free weights are killing me.
You and many people. So let's talk about aquatics here. Group fitness we will have. We'll be to offer classes with 10-feet distancing. We'll be using the gymnasiums and some of the rooms. Again, there'll be no shared equipment. Bring your own floor mat. If you need something to work out with or need something for that class, you bring it. We won't be providing it. We'll clean the room when you're done. The gymnasiums, as I said, pretty much going to be doing things such as pickleball, badminton, table tennis. You'll sign up for your sessions, you'll come in, and then we'll clean afterwards. At this time, we will not be offering basketball, volleyball, or soccer, but we hope to in the near future. For the pool, you can come in. Right now, per state guidelines, you can use aquatic facilities for exercise only. So the play features, for instance, if you go to Kempsville, one of our most popular rec centers, Kempsville actually has two pools, two tanks. You've got the pool in front, which is the leisure pool, the play features, that will be unavailable. It'll only be available for lap swim and the lap pool. We will only do two or one swimmers per lane, depending on the pool. We have that all worked out. We could go up to three, but at this time, we'll keep it to two or one. We'll see what the demand is like. And again, we will have cleaning protocols. The problem with the pools isn't so much the pool. There's pretty good guidance out there that the pool is safe to swim in, and chlorine will kill the coronavirus. It's the common touch points. It's the railings going in and out of the pool, it's the hooks on the deck, it's the bathrooms, and so that's the areas that are cleaned after each group comes through. Showers will not be available. Again, very hard to clean in between groups. Locker rooms and locker areas will not be available. However, you will be able to use showers on deck, on the pool deck. There's some rinse-off showers there. And the family changing rooms will be available for folks who want to take a shower there. We can clean those out in between. Of course, restrooms will be open. Hand washing will be encouraged. We'll have signage throughout the facilities, and again, written cleaning protocols for all of the areas. So when's all this happening? Everything's in the works right now. We will test this out with two facilities, starting next Monday. This is a huge task behind the scenes to set up all these timed slots in our online reservation system. It's about 1,000 timed slots per facility. We're going to make sure there's no glitches, make sure that we have good customer service and everything works. So we're going to open up two rec centers on Monday. They'll be open for two weeks as we test this out, make sure traffic flows down, cleaning process is down, online system's working. And then if all goes well, which we're pretty sure will, come July 6th, two weeks later, the remaining five centers will open to the public. We will be sending out extensive mailings to the public, informing them and educating them the changes, how to sign up for your slots, what they can expect, to really, again, help set that expectation for our members, because the experience is going to be a little different here for the foreseeable future. We'll have a call center set up for folks that... A lot of folks have been a member for a couple of years, but they haven't touched their account. They haven't gone in there and logged in and registered for a class. They just come. They're going to need to touch their account, make sure it's active, because that's the way they're going to be doing business with us for at least the next few months. And we're going to limit to start members to three activities per week, again, just to make sure about the demand. We'll see what the wait lists are like, we'll see what the demand is like. We can tweak that as we go. Maybe we can go up to five or six or more activities, but we're going to make sure when we open that we can serve as many people as possible and give them a few sessions per week to start. And people will sign up on a Friday for the following Monday through Sunday. So effective this Friday morning, folks will be able to go in and start signing up at two of the centers come next Monday, as we test out this system. Our rec centers have been closed since March, as you know. We have 40,000 members of our rec centers. It is, in my opinion, the best rec center system I've seen in the country of any system in terms of the size and scope of our operations and services. We have a lot of members. All of those members with paid memberships, they've been extended. If you signed up for a year membership the day before we closed down, you still have a year left on your membership. So we haven't charged against anybody's membership during our closed period. Once we reopen, they will be activated back up again. We are very excited to reopen. We are getting a lot of questions on Facebook, a lot of calls, a lot of people saying, "What are you going to open?". As you know, a lot of the private sector fitness centers are already open. The Y's are already open. They have been clamoring to find this out, so I'm pleased to release it tonight and to get the word out that as of next Monday, we'll have two of our seven open, and by July 6th, all seven will be open. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Moss? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Rouse first, then Mr. Moss.
Mike, two quick questions. First of all, thank you, Michael, for the work that you do for our rec centers. I myself is a... I work out at rec centers all the time. That's how I stay in shape. One other question I have, first is the aquatic, about the aquatic questions, about the exercising and the permission. I know that there is a Karen or Resistance water track at Williams Farm in Kempsville. Are those open? Because those are considered exercising.
Right. So we have decided at this point to keep the aqua tracks closed at this time, due to, really, the thought process there is, we can't really maintain social distancing. You can't maintain that 10 feet, and if a bunch of people are in there in close proximity, when you're swimming laps, your face is in the water most of the time, but there we're not. We can reassess that as we go, but just for the opening, we're going to keep those closed.
All right. And my second question is, when you say signups start on Friday, and so members have to sign up to be able to attend a rec center?
They've got to go into the online registration system and pick their spots. So starting Friday morning, they can go there and say, "Hey, I want to work out in the weight room on Monday, I want to swim on Wednesday, and I want to play..." and I want to play racquetball Friday. And they can find their time slot and register for that.
So how far in advance do those registrations go? Do you do that just a window, a week at a time?
A week at a time. So we're going to do Monday through Sunday. And you can sign up the Friday before. So starting Friday morning, you can sign up for any time spot, Monday through Sunday following.
Okay, and you can, so you can do like, sign up Monday and Wednesday and Friday, three different time slots?
One, yes, three slots total for the week.
Okay, for the week. And then on that, that next week, it restarts?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's how we'll test it out in the beginning.
Okay, thank you.
This is all an experiment in the COVID era.
Okay, Mr. Moss and Mr. Bellucci.
Well, Michael, it's always a pleasure to have you here.
Thank you, sir.
One of my favorite departments. But I need to say great service. But I'm wondering on what's the protocol as a consequence of a case in contract tracing? And we find out that one of those people testing positive traces back to a rec center since we have that. What is the protocol that you're following when the rec center has been traced back to one of your participants is tested positive through the contact tracing? How does that work?
So that's a great question for the health department. The good news is, the health department came to us and said, who is in this building during this timeframe? We'll have all that information. We will have the names of who was in what area because everything's been registered online.
What I'm asking is, what additional, because of that, what other kind of cleaning has to take place at the rec center that happens?
That I can't answer, but we do have a detailed cleaning policy in place right now for when we open. So Tracy's worked on that with building maintenance in terms of how many minutes they come through each bathroom, every touch point that's cleaned. The weight rooms are cleaned after every session is done, the pool session is done, we clean everything. So we have a detailed cleaning plan in place. But in terms of what if there's a positive, that I can't answer.
I would just at a later date, I don't know, given all the cleaning you do, the protocol may not require, I'll call a safety stand down, that's a Navy term. But I just would be interested what that is. Hopefully that never happens, but you know.
I can certainly inquire and find out.
Right, thank you very much.
Hopefully, we never have to find out, but I'll find out.
Also a pleasure to see you today.
You as well.
Mr. Bellucci.
Well, I want to thank Mr. Kirschman. After a couple of months at home, I promised myself that I would start visiting rec centers. And now I feel like a little bit on the spot, but I'm excited about the opportunity. So I'll have to sign up online for some time slots. But I just want to take a moment to thank the departments that we heard from today, parks and recreation, libraries and the aquarium. I know this is not easy to develop plans like this. And it's obvious to me based on the thoroughness and all the thought that was put into these plans that they were done so by professionals with, obviously, the thought to continue to provide excellent services, but to do it the right way, to do it safely. And I'm just so grateful for that and so grateful to all the teams, the city manager and deputy city managers and everyone in the city who made it possible to get these really important resources back open. It is a challenge, but they've done it really well and I'm really grateful for it. And I'm excited to take some of those time slots.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Ms. Wu.
Mr. Kirschman, I'd just like to say thank you very much for not only your presentation, but your leadership in the area of recreational department, as well as your staff. Indeed, recreational centers are a huge value to our community and your leadership shows that. And I've heard from a lot of constituents who wanted to know when the rec centers would open. So I'm so delighted to see that you have a plan and it will be going forth. So thank you very much for all that you're doing and all that your staff is doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one question, Michael. What is the status of the softball fields and the outdoor activities?
That's a great question. So outdoor activities, neighborhood park playgrounds can now be open. So the smaller playgrounds will be open effective tomorrow. The larger playgrounds are signature parks and our community parks in Kids Cove. We're going to keep those barricaded and closed at this time. Reason being, we know that those playgrounds attract over 50 people at a time. And per the governor's order and the intent of the order is not to have groupings of 50 people. So we really don't want playgrounds open where we know there's going to be 100 kids at once all there. The neighborhood park playgrounds maybe have a family at a time, never, never come near 50 people. So those can reopen. Right now, of course, the dog parks, the skate parks are all open currently as it stands. The trails are open. The only thing that we're not really permitting right now is organized athletics. We're holding off just a little bit longer on the organized athletics, although certainly anybody could go out there and with their son or daughter and hit a ball around on the field. Basketball is still closed and volleyball courts are still closed, but we're working through those. Everything else at this point is pretty much back open. Disc golf, tennis, skate parks, dog parks and neighborhood park playgrounds.
Yeah, a question about the softball fields though, because I understand a number of cities are already open?
That's, I'm aware of some that are open.
Okay. Okay, do you have a timeline on that maybe?
We're working through that as we speak. In fact, I was in conversation with the health department today. And the big one there is the difference between local play and tournament play. So, you know, two teams out there with a couple of parents versus a 50, 100, 150 team tournament at a facility with large crowds. And we're working through both of those right now.
Okay, Ms. Abbott.
I have a follow-up question about the neighborhood playgrounds because of course I get that all the time.
Yes, we've gotten it many times as well.
Are there, is there going to be any signage posted saying, you know, like, play at your own risk or anything like that?
So we will not post signage at those parks. There's a lot of them. We're talking over 190 playgrounds out there. We will put that on our social media. We will have it on our press release. We will have it on our FAQ and our website. But we don't and we can't sanitize and clean outdoor equipment. And quite honestly, neighborhood park playgrounds do get touched, but we have far higher touch points in our public spaces. Handrails, benches, picnic tables, kayak launch areas. So if you're going to do one without the other, either you're going to sanitize every outdoor surface, bike racks, or you're not going to sanitize. So it will be at your own risk. If the public wants to wipe it down, they're more than happy to, we will say that. But we will have that in all of our online and press releases. But we won't put signage at playgrounds, just like we don't at every bike rack and every bench, saying this isn't cleaned.
I'm actually going to, my second question was about the kayak launches. There was, there's one in my district that at some point during all of this has been barricaded. I don't know by us or by nature or by accident, but are those, are people able to utilize those?
Sure, they've been opening.
Without any restrictions?
Yep, there is.
Okay, I got an email about it today, that's why.
If you remember that.
I'm going to send it to you so we can figure out why that one is having a, I just wanted to clarify that. But I know that there's some neighborhood parks that are not owned or operated by the city that have the sign, that signage posted, which is why I was curious. So thank you very much.
And if you're in an apartment complex or an HOA and you have one playground, putting up one sign is fairly simple.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So Mayor, before our next presentation comes up, I'd like to point out that in the last four months of this ordeal, with a workforce of more than 7,000, we have only had 20 reported positive cases for COVID-19. Never more than a half a dozen at one time. And usually that was involved a little bit of a cluster of people connected to each other. As of this date, we have one reported active case for our entire workforce.
That's great news, thank you, Ms. Abbott.
It's really a tribute to the workforce, especially human services and all the public safety that are in contact with our public all the time. In many cases, they've never curtailed their services.
Great job, thanks to all.
So next up, I'd like to bring Ask Alice Kelly, our Director of Finance, and Kevin Kilbasa, our Principal Accounting, accountant. And they are going to give you a presentation on our recommendations for the CARES Act funding.
Welcome, Alice.
Welcome. I'm wanting to introduce Kevin Kilbasa. He's our Principal Accountant. He's leading a team to help determine the expenditures, expenses that are eligible. He's going to go through a little bit of the background because there is a lot of background on this in CARES Act. So let me.
Welcome.
Thank you, Alice, welcome, Mayor, council members. As Alice said, I'll be going through the CARES Act, the main CARES Act, and also the coronavirus relief funding that we're talking about here. So the CARES Act, as we know, was passed into law on March 26th. And it was, the goal of that was to provide economic relief to businesses and citizens. Some of the key elements with that was there were $2.2 trillion in total. And it was, they created an economic stabilization fund. They provided stimulus payments to some individuals based off of the income limits up to $1,200. They also provided additional unemployment to individuals. You got an additional $600 per week, and that's in effect through July 31st. And also, it could be up until December 31st. Now, the key, the key element that we're talking about here is a coronavirus relief fund, which was a total of $150 billion to states, which they provided to the localities. The state of Virginia got $3.1 million, which then, once it allocated out to the different localities, we got $39 million, the city did. Some other elements of it were the education stabilization fund and also other flexible funding to the states. So the CARES Act, the Treasury provided some guidance on there. And that falls under Section 601 of the Social Security Act. There were three qualifications. The costs incurred were necessary expenditures due to COVID-19. The expenditures were not accounted for in the budget as of March 26th. And the expenses incurred from March 1st to December 30th. And as we know, there was a certification that went around that was signed by the mayor, the city manager and the finance director that the funds that we were receiving were going to be used properly. Now, as with this federal money, it follows the other $150 million that we received that it is audited by our external auditors. It is reported on our CIFA and it follows a uniform grant guidance. The OMB also released some other memorandums about how the funding should be spent. And there were some frequently asked questions by the Treasury that they provided as well. So some of the guidance that was provided, what are necessary expenditures? And they were costs that were included directly to responding to the public health emergency. They were not accounted for in the most recent budget, meaning that they were new and the line items were used for a substantially different use than they were budgeted for. The most recently approved, as I had mentioned, it was as of March 26th. And the incurred costs, meaning that the cash is out the door, these expenses have been paid for by December 30th. So here we provided a brief example of different expenses. One, you have the medical expenses. Two, you have public health expenses. And we listed out just a couple of examples of each, but I won't go over them here. You have payroll expenses, which can include public safety, public health, human services, anyone whose time is dedicated to mitigating or responding to the public health crisis. Number four, you have compliance with public health measures. You have economic support. And this could be related to providing grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost for interruption caused by any required closures or also providing any equipment for whenever they are opening up. And then also, we have some other expenses here that are really, any expenses that are reasonably necessary for the function of government that meet the eligibility. Here are a list of ineligible expenditures. And I just wanted to point out here that it is not available to reimburse the city for any revenue that they have lost during the time. And here are some examples of some of the frequently asked questions. Do the governments have to return the unspent funds? Yes, they do. If they have not been spent by December 30th, we have to return them back to the state. Can it be used to provide individual assistance? The answer is yes. Then here's an important one here too. Can the funds be used to give it to individuals who cannot meet their property taxes? The answer to that is no. But it can be used for them to provide it to individuals for utility payments, whether that be water and sewer payments to get their services back to a good standing. And last, can the funds be used to cover employment training? And that answer is yes as well. So with that, I'm going to have Ms. Kelly come back up here and talk more about the coronavirus relief fund.
Any questions for Kevin? Mr. Moss?
There is a provision in the regulatory regulations that there are instances specifically to prevent a foreclosure that would impact a qualifying or disabled kind of person. There are exceptions in there where certain types of taxes can be paid to prevent a foreclosure that would make someone homeless.
Correct.
That isn't a regulation, but it wasn't on the slide.
Right, correct.
Thank you.
There's a lot of provisions that are not on the slide. We only did a few examples, so it's just, it's so much.
Just for the watching public, I want them to know that's not an exclusive listing.
Right, thank you. So when we started looking at this, we developed some considerations before we made some recommendations. So we determined that, you know, the revenue impacts are still uncertain. We are estimating future expenses. The eligibility and gathering analysis and documentation has been extensive. We do not know the length of the public health crisis or the economic crisis. And we still have additional guidances forthcoming. Just yesterday, the governor asked the president to reduce the 25% eligibility for the FEMA match that we, the state has matched. We have publications or letters from VACO to the governor and the Secretary of Finance answered saying, look at the U.S. Treasury guidance. So we are still looking at all the guidance that we are receiving and making determinations of what are eligible. So we have determined current and estimated city expenses based on the guidance we have so far. We are reviewing with other localities, attorneys, auditors who assist and interpret the guidance. We spoke with CLA, which is our external auditor. And there are a lot of gray areas on this. And so we asked him outright, what about this? What about that? And he said, you know, we're still determining what the costs are and what are eligible and what are ineligible. The comment he made to me, though, I thought was very important is, be prepared, it's going to get policed. And so things will be audited very extensively and the documentation will need to be there. The other comment, we, the Secretary of Finance wrote back is, you know, look at the U.S. Treasury guidance. So we developed a framework for appropriation to allow for contingencies and some flexibility, but to meet the spending deadlines because the check has to be out the door by December 30th. One of the things that we're certain is we're going to have to continually plan and revise as we move forward. To date, we have had care funding awarded to the city, 39.3 million for the CRF. We've had 3.5 million for HUD, for housing assistance for cares. We've had a small amount for our supplemental funding program for our justice assistance grant. And then the schools has received $10.1 million from the school elementary and secondary school emergency relief. I spoke with the CFO for the schools this morning. They just got the formula for the private schools because there is a private school portion that has to go. And that will be definitely less than 10% if the private school wants to receive federal funds. Our recommended timeframe is by June 30th, accept the 39.3 million. And based on council's approval, appropriate 29.3 million for expenses and relief programs through September 30th. And then place $10 million in reserve for a later date. Use the, what we have spent and put it on our CIFA for our external auditor. And then create and maintain a CARES website, which we have already done. By mid-September, we should have a really good estimate of what our revenues and actual COVID expenditures are. And then determine further relief and expenses to be covered. And then have council appropriate the remaining $10 million and maybe reallocate what we've already appropriated through September 30th. And then by December 30th, pay for the eligible expenses. And hopefully not, but if we had to return any unused portion to the state. On Slide 17, we have estimated our expenditures by category through May 30th. And this is cash out the door. $4.4 million has been spent on what we've determined that could be eligible. We have made some encumbrances and purchases that are not in this 4.4, but this is what has been out the door. We estimate through December 30th, spending the rest of the 34.8 with a economic support portion of 17.5 million. And so the total of the 39.3 million will be spent by December 31st. Or 30th, excuse me, it's not 31st. This is a pie chart representation where we have economic support of 45%. Public health expenses about 33.5. Medical expenses and compliance of 10.8 and 0.2%. And then our salaries about 8.1%. Appropriation timing, so as we said before, Appropriation timing, so as we said before, we thought we should recommend to the city council to appropriate by category $29.3 million to cover through September 30th, come back to the council, knowing the revenues that are coming in on mid-August, mid to end August, and reappropriate the rest of the $10 million based on circumstances at the time. We estimated we would allocate it this way. It's obviously up to council to determine the exact appropriation. Some of the individual relief funds that we have, we have assistance managed programs for individuals. So, we have housing, utility assistance, and human services. We're proposing a workforce training program. We would work with TCC and Virginia Wesleyan to assist residents that have furloughed, and retooling for different sectors in the community, and proposing that that program will run out of the new Hive Center in the town center. We also thought we should provide some support for non-for-profits and use the community organization grant process and provide that as part of the individual relief for non-for-profits, including some of the cultural art programs. In business relief, we believe the small business personal protective equipment, we can cover purchases of protective equipment for small businesses, cover any unexpected costs that small businesses might have, and we would require receipts for those even before or after the grant has been given. Then, we also would develop a program for businesses that they can adapt their workspace, because obviously with social distancing and with what our safety requirements require now, they might have to adapt their workspace. And so, money would be awarded based on the cost of the construction. And we have developed a table for the economic support for COVID, and so, we have three different columns, what the city is already doing, what we would do with the CARES coronavirus fund, what we have for CARES for other funds such as HUD, and then a total. And so, for individual relief, we have in total $21.9 million. We have individual, we have taxpayer relief, which is not eligible under CARE, public utilities right now, $4 million, and then meals tax holiday was about $3 million. And then, for the CARES fund, we would have human services, some of the programs that they run, about $3 million. We would develop a different utilities, a program for a million dollars, housing about half a million, workforce training, $2 million, and then non-for-profits, 1.8. The CARES HUD and CDVG money would total about $4.6 million. For businesses, we already have the EDIP program for rent and utilities, and then for the CARES fund, we would use small business PPE and adapting the workspace for 6.2, for a total of 9.2 for the CARES money for businesses. And in total, it's about 22% of all the funding is from the CARES fund, and then the allocation is about 33% for businesses and about 77% for individuals based on this, this table. So, the next steps, we would, we have a public hearing scheduled for next week on June 23rd, and based on council's approval, we would appropriate the $29.3 million for expenses and relief programs through the categories. We would add the expenditures to the CIFA, as I said, and we would, we have that website created already to provide the transparency that the OMB circular requires. Then, by mid-September, we review the revenues and determine expenses and further relief programs, and then appropriate the remaining $10 million. And then, we would finish it off by December 30th. It does appear that the state will probably require a report on how the money is spent sometime in September, October timeframe. And we have some appendixes for more details of how we've already spent the money, or spent some of the money that's eligible for the CARES reimbursement. Do you have any other questions?
Ms. Wilson, and then Mr. Moss.
So, I know the schools are providing a lot of meals to the children that need it.
I'm so sorry, I cannot hear you.
I'm sorry. I know the schools are providing a lot of meals, like somewhere between $100,000 to $140,000 a week to the children that need it. Is any of this money going to be going to the schools?
Right now, no. They have their own $10 million portion. We do not allocate any.
So, the CARES Act provided $10 million to the schools?
Right.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moss and Mr. Tower.
On the meals, in the earlier appropriation bill, there was money set aside by the Department of Agriculture to cover the lunch situation, so that really wasn't a CARES Act bill. That was dealt with by a separate appropriation line when they passed another bill. I can't remember the name of it, but the school lunches were provided by that. I'd like to turn to Slide 15, if I could, please. I was listening on the way down to the council meeting today, because the superintendent was on WHRO radio, talking about school opening and the issues, and talking about that their shortfall of revenues over what they thought they were going to have was approximately $50 million. And he wasn't certain that the money that they were getting, the direct grant to them to spend $10 million, would cover all the additional costs as they deal with transportation, as they deal with the classroom situations and all that stuff. So, probably would be mindful that that reserve money, before we know what the school situation is, that we don't think we're spending that somewhere else. So, I just think we need to be mindful of that and what are their shortfall. I did look in detail for the initial money that was city money that we passed out, you know, on those grants, through Economic Development Authority. And if you look, every business that was kind of almost exclusively in the top 10 businesses, in terms of employers that you see, and our bond prospectus, and also property taxpayers, many of those businesses got grants. I was listening to Bernanke when he was speaking today, I think it was the Senate, not the House, as the Federal Reserve Board Chairman, talking about the impact on small businesses, and the biggest impact was on minority small businesses, and about 47% of them were being financially stressed and not otherwise, kind of getting relief and the chances that they would fail. So, I think this members of this body, that whatever we do, we need a drastically different definition of small business than the one we had last time relative to how we do the CARE Act funding. I know we, I think maybe we need to have a set aside talking about percentages for SWAM businesses, because I just think we're not going to get the money where it has the biggest outcome, because it's difficult to judge from that matrix, what's the outcome that we get. I know the input's money, but would we get a better community output by more money into the hands of families than we currently are doing? Would we get a bigger outcome if we raised the threshold at which people could qualify for rent assistance? And is that a better outcome in terms of affecting the most people than the allocation we suggested? Is $1.8 million for nonprofit really the best outcome versus putting hands directly in the money of families, which I think is kind of what we should be trying to do? So, I have concerns on the allocation, because we don't understand how the, how it was determined on an outcome and a public impact policy basis. It looks like we're just trying to address all the stakeholders, and while sometimes that makes sense, here we've got to look at who's hurting the most and who's most on the edge. And we ought to, that ought to be our standard, and I'm not confident that we're there in light of that. So, I hope that those are the things. I do know that we can pay fees for, for a certain kind of fees, for water bills in certain situations, that's in the guidance, regulatory guidance, that's in there. But we certainly have to do better on the distribution towards truly small businesses than we achieve with our own money. I think, I think expectations, we should have higher, we should be really making sure we are truly touching the small business. We shouldn't be seeing people in the top property owners, "Matter of half, I got a benefit on that last go around." They're on that list. And while they qualified, and I'm not taking exception to their qualifications for the criteria we set, that shouldn't be the criteria for the CARES Act funding, and I think we need to see what that criteria is. When we make the appropriation, we should know how that money will go out in the community. We didn't have that last time. I saw the result from what was. I don't think it's the result we want to have here. I just opened your eyes to that. If we, if you look, and I think we just need to make sure, as much as possible, we're getting, I like the part about, you know, getting people back to work, that certainly makes a lot of sense, but this is about, and then truly small businesses, and I just want to make sure, and I don't know that adapting workspaces for business, so that's something that we could do, but again, is that the best outcome versus helping businesses another way? I just, I don't understand, because the analysis that got us to this categorical allocation hasn't been provided, and so, I don't know how we came with these numbers. But I do know the intent, if you look at the congressional testimony, the intent, with a large part of this was to help individuals to the extent possible, and I mean individuals, help individuals, the small businesses survive so they can keep getting a family income. I mean, I think that's all part of that, but I think it's different than businesses with 250 employees, when most small businesses have less than 10 employees, and minority businesses, we just, we're going to be, we're adopting today, as you know, these targets and goals, but here's an instance, we have an allocation of money, and we don't have any business target or goals to make sure that it isn't first come, first served. Those are things we talked about before, how we're going to allocate the dollars. So, I think the mechanics and the reasoning are as important as the summary statement of the money. And I know we have a public hearing, but I hope that before we vote for the appropriation, that we have a little bit better insight and can understand the outcomes we hope to achieve, and that we do reserve that money for the schools in the event that they need a bigger bucks, because otherwise, that money still has to come, and it's going to have to come for us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Alice, very much. I know a lot of work went into this. Their regulations are extraordinarily complex and difficult to figure things out, and I won't hold us up today, but I kind of echo what Mr. Moss said. I really would appreciate the detail, starting, I guess, with, you know, page 17, and then on about what's driving the allocations within that, and what choices were made by, you know, what, what was sort of already there, low-hanging fruit, easy to apply, clearly, you know, and what, what was a little fuzzier. A little more detail on this before we have to vote on it would be very, very helpful.
Sure. I think with salaries is probably the fuzziest of all of the categories, and it is to most localities. Public health expenses, you know, masks and, and equipment that you need to buy, that's pretty clear and pretty straightforward. The compliance with public health measures, we bought a significant amount of IT support for teleworking and to improve the libraries for distant reading, and we have, you know, just even today, as we had mentioned, in order to review our purchasing, I've been going through each list of requisitions, and today, the library has came, "I need this amount of money for signs to put up in our libraries." And so, that's compliance with public health measures. So, some of these are pretty straightforward. The economic support, the salaries are more, there's some decisions to be made on those.
So, the economic support, the $17.5 million figure on Slide 17.
Right.
That's, is that simply the result of taking the estimated costs in, in one, two, three, four, and six, and coming back with a number? Is that a plug?
Well, what we did is, we looked at human services and how much more money they were spending in their SNAP programs. And public utilities, we came up with a number that we thought would be beneficial to citizens that were in need of having their water restored or not turned off, because that is the requirement for, to pay a utility bill, it has to be because of the pandemic and that you will be without that service. So, if your utility bill, whether it be water or wastewater or electricity, if you're in jeopardy of having your utility turned off. That is, that is a thing. Our housing, we did have more in the housing, but because we received more federal funds from the CARES Act, we reduced that and increased the not-for-profits. And so, workforce training, it was an estimate developed by the Development Authority, the Economic Development Department, of what they thought would be an appropriate amount for the number of people that they see, that may need workforce training. Not-for-profits, we took a percentage of what we thought might be a useful. We have received some estimates from some not-for-profits and from some cultural organizations. We're not there yet with all the dollar amounts, and that's why we have nice round numbers for this, because it is a estimate right now. For small businesses PPE, until people apply, we might get overwhelmed by that, or we might not need as much. I would think $3 million is, is an appropriate amount. Adapting workplaces, to me, that is a very expensive proposition, especially for a small business, and that might be what keeps them from opening up. So, we put a little bit more money into that. So, for these, the CARES Act funding, we, we tried very hard to develop an appropriate dollar amount for what we thought might be out there. But until people apply, until we know the need, we might need to be flexible. And as I said in the beginning, we're going to have to continually refine this, we're going to have to continually read the legislation. There is the possibility that FEMA might be eligible, we might be able to apply our, our city's PPE costs to FEMA, and then use the CARES Act money for additional business relief or individual relief. So, there is some determination in most cities and counties in the state of Virginia especially, or being a little bit flexible in the, in the categories, and allocating it by category, and then taking a, an approach of, as the money gets spent, we will revise the individual categories based on what gets spent.
Were there any categories that had at least some credibility in terms of being eligible that were eliminated that aren't? On Slide 22, did you cover pretty much everything you could find?
We, we tried to cover everything we could find. We, you know, we've been, every Wednesday, we go to a nine o'clock meeting with all the localities in Virginia, with the finance directors and the budget directors in the state of Virginia. The executive director of GFOA, which is the Government Finance Office Association, is also on that call. He happens to live in Roanoke, so he's on that call every, every, every week. And so, we've gotten a lot of ideas from a lot of different places. And so, we've tried to get every category that we could possibly think that would be eligible, and that's the other thing, is it has to be pandemic-related, it has to be a necessary expenditure for the pandemic, it has to occur after March 20, at March 1st, excuse me, and not be budgeted. So, for city, and obviously, for business, it's all a bit different. So, we did try to put it in categories that we thought would be most applicable and most helpful for businesses and individuals.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Woodman.
I would just like to say, there's a great deal of merit in what Mr. Moss is bringing to light. We really do want to address those who are in despair and, and have the need. So, we really want to focus on those areas and ensure that we get the funding to them first, you know, or, you know, it's, make sure that that's an urgency area for us in terms of, you know, individual needs, and especially, you know, our small businesses, especially the SWAM businesses. This is a huge opportunity for the city to address the disparity among our small business owners and the SWAM business owners. So, I have already, you know, I've reached out to the city manager and told him, you know, in terms of outreach, getting the word out, awareness, I'm happy to roll my sleeves up, get involved, get that information out to whomever needs it. Put me to work on that. I'm happy to help you, because this is a huge opportunity for us, and we need to take advantage of it. So, I'm, I'm here to support you in that area, I'm happy to help, and thank you.
Sure, sure. I forgot, Taylor is here. I forgot Taylor is here.
Yeah. Thank you, councilmember. And councilmember Moss, thank you for your earlier comment on this point. We saw exactly the same thing in the data that you saw in that first, in that first pool. Important to note, we have not advanced any, any of the potential applicants on the first docket for payment. It was actually exactly what you're talking about. We asked the city auditor to come in and check 100% of the awards between $9,000 and $10,000 and 25% of the rest of the pool, just for exactly what you're talking about, specifically looking for related entities between tenants and landlords, but also just to do a spot check of the whole program. Because we did, I will admit, when, primarily, it was Mr. Stiles, the younger Alex Stiles, and Dana Harmeyer from the attorney's office and I that collaborated on the initial version of that EDIP part E. We were somewhat flying blind writing a new policy. I will tell you, in the first bit of data that we got, we saw exactly what you're talking about. And where I am pleased to see that there are a wealth of businesses that are in that 25 and fewer, and in many cases, 10 and fewer employees. We saw some things in that first pool that think, that we think give us pause as it relates to how we can do better. If you all will remember, we tracked with, there were two definitions that we brought forward. One was the federal definition of a small business, the second was the Virginia definition. One thing that we would offer is there is, though not currently available to localities, there is the governor's definition that exists of a micro-small business that exists by executive order and has been reaffirmed in the last, by the last two administrations. We have that definition, and it's something that we could absolutely bring forward as part of whatever data we bring to you next. But we agree that there's an opportunity to be better.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Henley.
While you're there.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you please clarify for me, all right, a SWAM business?
Yes, ma'am.
Is a small business? And that is determined by the number of employees?
Twofold test. And it's been a minute since I was in the purchasing office, but I think I can still do this. And so, so there is a, it is 250 employees or Dana, less than, less than 50?
Ten million.
Less than 10 million per year in revenue, but it's, but it's or language as opposed to and. So you can qualify under either, under either of those provisions. So you can have fewer than, you can have 10 employees but have 25 million a year in revenue and still be called a small. You can have 250 employee, you can have 251 employees but have fewer than 10 million in revenue and be a small. And so we do think that there are other, there are ways to improve that definition. In fact, in your legislative packet in each of the last two years, you've asked, or actually in each of the five years since I've been here, you all have asked for our ability to use the micro-small designation that's not been afforded by the General Assembly. And also, you've asked for, in one version, changing the and to an or in that definition. And so this is something that you all are, that you all have precedent on that we can bring forward.
So SWAM businesses are small businesses, but then when you get to the other women and minority, then you're, then they are not qualified by size?
No, no, ma'am, they would have the same, the same size qualification. And so the same definition, we, in fact, this is, this is important to note, because we have had, for example, minority-owned businesses that we are not able to count as Virginia SWAMs anymore because they have outgrown that, because they have outgrown the revenue and size, and size limit. It's one of the reasons that you, that our policy also allows for self-certification. And I see Rebecca's here as well. Rebecca, give me the first.
I just don't get it. If all small businesses are qualified under the S portion of it, small, then are all of them, what's the, tell me the difference.
So, so it's, last time I looked, about 88% of the businesses in the Commonwealth of Virginia qualified as small. The reason that we track women and minority-owned businesses because, because that is through your Small Business Enhancement Plan, that is, well, women, minority, and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. That is, that is the charge that we have received from you. That is the business population that you have directed us through your, through your prior actions and through the adoption of your disparity study to create, basically to create a result in. And so that is why we track them separately. But for Virginia, if you are a SWAM, small business counts the same as women and minority counts.
Okay, so I'm just really confused and I see Dana's, because he's been trying to explain the difference to me and see, I still don't have it.
So I'm going to give you the opposite answer that Mr. Adams just gave you. The definition of minority-owned business is specifically about the ownership, not about the size. So you could be a minority-owned business for purposes of the Virginia Public Procurement Act and exceed the employee number or the gross receipts number or both, as long as you meet the ownership criteria.
Okay, so the number of employees only applies to the S in SWAM, the small businesses?
Or the dollar amount, yes.
Or the dollar amount?
Yes.
The minority and the women and the veterans, disabled veterans, they don't have the number?
They're classified by ownership.
Part, they're by ownership.
So if over 51% of the ownership is of the defined group, then they can be part of the classification as defined in the code.
Okay, I think I've got it, but it seems like we don't apply it. We apply as something different as a SWAM business than a small business.
And so what I believe Mr. Adams was pointing to is that the circle of small is just so big that it swallows up all but a few of the very, very large minority-owned or women-owned businesses, but they are still minority or women-owned on their own, notwithstanding their size.
Mr. Moss.
Thanks, Dana.
I'm going to try to, don't run away, gentlemen. I'm trying to track this back to my federal knowledge.
Yes, okay.
You have to not have 51% of the equity in a company, but you have to have 51% or more of the controlling interest in the company. That's what a minority, what's about ownership doesn't necessarily mean equity. It means 51% of the voting power. This is for federal, you own 51% or more of the vote, then you own the company, no matter how many stockholders are. You can ask Elon Musk about that. But the, but that's true.
Well, the Virginia statutes are key to equity.
Okay, let's just go, but there's two steps. There's one, what you have to have to qualify, that's that ownership issue. But there's also a standard after which you graduate and you no longer, because of your earning power and your market presence, you no longer are a small business. So if you have a small business program and within that there's a minority set aside, which is what the federal program actually does, you can qualify for either. But you can graduate from the minority set aside because you now have exceeded the economic parameters such that you no longer are a small business and you no longer compete because, and I don't know if the states like that, but on the federal level, you graduate out of the program.
So the federal level is called disadvantaged business enterprise, and it does include that sort of economic overlay to it as part of a substantiation thing? And that is something that is not in the Virginia statutes?
Okay, I just want, so that is a distinguishing difference, because you can get a major advantage when you no longer need one. I just want people to know the difference between the programs. And I think that's what I thought Councilwoman Henley was trying to get at, is what constitutes it and how long do you get to be it? The state thing, you're it forever.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, that, as long as we know what it is, I'm just trying to make sure that.
But.
But you can grow out of the small.
Of the small piece, that's right.
Right, but not the other.
And I apologize for misspeaking. Like I say, it's, it's been a minute since I've read these definitions.
But in the, in the ownership part of it, I'm not clear on how one qualifies. I mean, is, does someone go out and just have to have somebody on their board or in their ownership capacity that meets one of those minority or gender qualifications? And then they're qualified? Or is there some assurance that they really have to be owners and involved? Or are we opening up for some kind of fraudulent activity?
I believe.
So fraud is most certainly a concern, and we've seen fraud in the federal program prosecuted aggressively. The state list of your submittals starts with a very clear statement about perjury on the first line. So they also are very concerned about fraudulent activities and, at least from what we've understood from the state, they seek to police this because they know of the possibility of fraud.
I'll be so glad when we can get back in our smaller room and I can understand you all better. But anyway, okay, so if we're going to be doing local certification, which standards are we going to use?
Well, so, and so let me take a step back from this conversation, which is very much, traditionally, your Small Business Enhancement Plan has been something that the finance and specifically the purchasing division within finance have used to deliver, basically to track and monitor small women and minority-owned contracting experience for the city. What we are talking about here from an incentive standpoint is really not something that we have actively tracked at all. And so now, in recent public-private partnerships that you all have done, we have, we have ensured that we have used, that we have added the Small Business Enhancement Plan to the contract language that we have brought forward to begin track, gathering and tracking this data in those, in those projects. The EDIP part E is the first time that I know of that in, that my office has utilized that definition to, to, as a, as a factor of tracking within an economic development incentive program that you have offered. So the reason that we were trying to go with a known definition is because we were, in effect, doing, we were creating policy and establishing precedent. And so we went with the state definition instead of the federal definition because the, it appeared that day that the consensus of this body was that to go with the smaller definition. What I'm hearing Councilmember Moss and Councilmember Woodin tell me today is that what we saw in the data is, we maybe need to find a definition that is smaller still, and that is where we believe the micro-small designation that the governor's office has already drafted is something that at least gets us started in that space.
Dana was going to say something else.
I was just going to say, you are not constrained by the definitions in the Public Procurement Act in the EDIP, so you have more leeway to define. What you do lose is the ability to track a certification program. So, so in essence, someone's got to look behind the applications, but you do have more flexibility if you want to do a micro designation or some other size designation.
And the reason that micro, for that reason, the reason that we liked the Virginia's definition of small is it allowed us, it was a, it was a standard that existed that we could track. Micro-small is also a standard that the state is tracking because of the governor's executive order, and it gives us the ability to manage it without creating a new standard that we would have to define from the beginning.
Another question. I've got so many, I won't ask them all today. We'll keep going on this, but how do we conform all of this to our nondiscrimination policy?
So the nondiscrimination policy in the Virginia Public Procurement Act is, it's a two, it's, there's two pieces. One is a broad statement about nondiscrimination generally, but then there's a requirement that you undertake written policies towards SWAM participation. And so in essence, you've got this broad thing that says, don't discriminate, and then you've got this other thing that says, you need to undertake programs that allow for increased participation among certain groups. And so that's where you get the service-disabled veterans, that's where you get the SWAM businesses, that's where you get the ability of this council, if it so chooses, to enact, based on a disparity study, some remedial programs that are minority-based or woman-based. It's sort of all in there, but, but you have to hold the two pieces at the same time, almost intention, because there is a difficulty holding this really broad statement about anti-discrimination while these other sort of targeted programs that seek to bring more vendors to city contracting.
Well, I was just thinking about the Supreme Court decision yesterday. You know, we just have a lot of things, but, you know, maybe we're not broad enough, maybe we're confining too much. I don't know, just too many questions. And then, since I was going to ask these under the agenda questions, but if, while you're here, I noticed we've dropped out the Native Americans.
So that is, that is specific to the Project Goals ordinance. And as sort of laid out in the agenda request, we are constrained in a race-conscious measure to go no further than what's in the disparity study. And so the disparity study found a underutilization of Asian-owned businesses, African-American-owned businesses, and Hispanic-owned businesses, but they did not find an underutilization of Native American businesses. So based on the fourth circuit case that applies to us, if we included a group that was not supported in the disparity study, we would open ourselves up to litigation for being over-broad in the use of a race-conscious remedial effort. So in many ways, we're just constrained by the findings of the disparity study, and the findings don't support, in the construction space, including Native American-owned businesses.
Oh, I just thought I remembered that they were the lowest down, so I would have thought.
So their utilization ratio was actually over 100, which means that they had exceeded what you would expect based on availability alone.
And if I remember the math of that study, that was primarily attributable to the supply of Native American-owned general contractor and subcontractors in the region.
Relatively low supply, and they've done well. That's, I think, what.
But I, I mean, I'll ask these later on, but, you know, I don't know how people qualify like an Asian-American. We seem to be going to country of origin, and I don't know how far back you go in your lineage to qualify. But I'll find out all of this when I ask more questions. I just, one, one thing seems to lead to another.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we'll go to council comments. Anyone? Mr. Moss.
I want to come back to the discussion I talked about earlier about BMPs. I know it's on the agenda today, but this is the Thalia BNP that I asked for additional information on, and I think it's insightful and instructive, because I want, first of all, thank the staff for giving me all the information and the photos, I appreciate that. This was the inspection report in August of 2018. So we actually inspected this BNP. We talked about all the things that were wrong, they had the photographs of all the things that were wrong. But guess what? No action taken. Now, when you read the agreement, this gets back to, we can pass lots of policies, lots of procedures, but what gets measured, what gets inspected is what gets done and what gets compliance respectively. Because it says in this management agreement that the owner of the property, and it goes to all the details that the banks do, is solely responsible for performance and the obligation required hereunder and to the extent permitted under applicable law, the payment of any fines and fees and penalties associated with such performance or failure to perform under this agreement. Well, in August of 2018, based on this report, this person, this property owner failed to comply with the agreement with the standards. No action taken. Now you say, well, gosh, wouldn't we know what that is and wouldn't we think council would know? Well, this gets back to, then it says, oh, but non-compliance isn't in our annual report submitted to DEQ. We just get this gloss over, you know, the 80,000 satellite view. What gets, because these individual non-compliances, which can add up, those individual reports must be maintained by the city, because I got one, thank you, and be available to DEQ in the event of an audit or citizen complaint. We're resting the foundation of all this stuff that we have on this type of compliance, this type of inspection, this type of integrity of the program. It should cause us all to be thanking, and I look forward to our new city manager. I'll certainly be raising this a concern, because all the policies and procedures don't mean anything if you don't hold people accountable. They've signed up, they said they were going to do these things, we found out they didn't do those things, but yet we never made these people comply. And then when it comes to 2020 and a rezoning, we said, oops, we can just delay longer. Like I said before, is if these standards mean something and deliver a public benefit, then we shouldn't be delaying enforcement. And this is, and I don't, and this makes you wonder, how many other cases do we have? And so I think, I'll be talking, maybe we need a third party to go and just look at all these BMPs, because I've been driving around and I think we have a lot more of them than, than just this one that are not in compliance. I know the neighborhood in Thalia has sent this to DEQ, and shortly thereafter, there were a lot of city trucks over at the BNP at Thalia West Wayside. But my question was, why weren't they private sector trucks? Because it's a private sector responsibility per this agreement. So I, as we look forward to that, I think we have got some major issues. Other issue that I want to talk about a little bit.
May I come in on that?
Certainly, please. Please, Ms. Henley.
Just as an, at least two that I know of in my district, that when, I guess, the city went in to do the maintenance on an old BNP or required it to be, and suddenly it was no longer able to be the nice wild area it is, there was so much, I mean, the pushback came from people, what are you all doing to our natural area? You've come in and you've cut down the trees and you've. You've come in and you've cut down the trees, and you've done so-and-so." So, this is an issue with BMPs in general, and we've got a lot of them, and, but then it also goes to our, our capability of being able to monitor all of the hundreds of BMPs that we've got in the city, and then being able to enforce it. And, you know, this whole ability of overseeing that is, I think, maybe our responsibility, but that gets into, do we have enough people on staff to do it, and then how is it going to get done? It's, it's a real sticky wicket, because these BMPs get to be their, their local natural area, and I put my trees there, and I thought it was mine, but didn't realize that now it's a part of the BMP, and we, we really need to do some investigation into the whole BMP issue.
My other topic, and I, no, I shared all.
Yeah, okay.
The BNP issue is definitely a, a, a really major issue. If you all can remember, Mr. Kirk Clark came here from the Sea-Tech community a while back.
Mr. Kirk Clark from the Sea-Tech community came here a while back and, and spoke about the BMP that was in his neighborhood, and how he had, there was supposed to be a contract on who was supposed to be the maintenance of that BMP, and to come to find out, it wasn't him, it was the city, but yet the city didn't, didn't come out and do it, and so they, there were some discrepancies in that matter. This is really a, a strong issue that Mr. Moss brought up, but I, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, bring up Mr. Clark and all the, the numerous times he came before, I think he came before council maybe twice, and even when Mr. George Menz was alive, to speak about the BMP issues in, in the Sea-Tech community, and how still to this day, he, we haven't found a remedy for that. So, I think it's something we definitely need to look into.
Good point. Mr. Moss.
The other item I, I wanted to bring up, since it was one of the briefing things that we got over the weekend, was this five-question survey, and I know I sent all of you an email sharing with you my thoughts on that, which I won't consume all the time now, but I would like that before that goes out, that this council as a body has a time to look at my comments, we can have a chance to really discuss that. I, I know I have raised several times that we take self-selection and self-participation input from people, and then pass that off as if it was statistically significant and somehow represented the body politic. And the example that I used is all the meetings that we had on Light Rail, all the workshops, all the Delphi Technique questioning, you know, and in the end, the public told us overwhelmingly, you got the answer wrong. And so, I think we're heading down that same path with the comp plan, we're not asking the right questions, and we're posing questions to condition a response, because it fits in with some larger belief somewhere, but I, if I'm out in the community, Mr. Mayor, I don't hear people raising their hands, "Let's increase the density in the city of Virginia Beach, let's get more urbanized, you know, let's replicate Northern Virginia." Now, I don't hear that out in the community, you know, and then the, the questions we're leading. So, before we go forward asking the public those questions, for me, I think we need to, what are the questions we want to ask? You know, what are the questions that are on our minds ought to be the ones that are asked? And I did mention that, it's easy to refer, just ask people, you know, "You think the city's too low in density, you think we want to, you know, be Northern Virginia too?" I, I don't, I don't see that, but, but those are the questions we should be asking, rather than saying, without any cost or any context, you know, mixed-use development, we'll talk about that with the rezoning later, or connective between new development. Well, there isn't much land, so you're really saying connective redevelopment, but we're learning from the marketplace that without taxpayer subsidies, we can't make that happen in the way that some vision people want. And I think that discussion, we should know that the questions that we asked are the questions that are going to help us make decisions and let us know that we're getting feedback from the residents. And I think that's too important a decision to be left to staff and the Urban Land Institute to articulate. We should be doing that for ourselves, we're the people that work for the people, and we got to be posing the questions we would like them to answer. So, I hope that will be on an agenda in the near future.
Thank you. Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, recently I had opportunity to sit down with local community leaders, faith leaders, civic leaders, and, you know, I think Councilman Tower was there as well, as well as interim police chief, Tony Sacaro. And, you know, we sat down and we listened to the community leaders and business leaders and faith leaders. There's a major concern about what is actually taking place, not only in our city, but in our country, and the fact that we are not immune to the, the civil unrest that's going on, the, the, the national, you know, specifics of what's going on, centered around injustices that the African-American community is facing. Those, those type of, those, those, that type of spotlight was, was a major concern for, within this meeting, and particularly looking at this past weekend with the shootings and the unrest that's going on within our community. They wanted to come together to find, you know, what's a solution, what's, how do we get back to that something-in-the-water type of feeling that said, you know, "We understand our city has a unique history, but, you know, we try to put that to rest, we try to put that to bed," and that's something in the water helped us do, is move beyond the, the, those, those type of biases that our, our community has, and move beyond that perception. And so, listening to, you know, again, to the community, they come up with an organic type of movement that says, you know, "We are open, you know, we are inclusive, we are a city that values everyone, that, that values black lives," and they come up with a, a campaign of "Listen, Learn, Love, Black Lives Do Matter," and this is an organic movement within our community that, that wants buy-in from, from this body. I think Councilman Tower has wanted to chime in on this.
Yeah, I was at that meeting, and this, what, what Councilman Ross and I are doing is sort of trying, just giving you a preview, just so you have time to get used to the idea and think about it.
Turn me the mic.
Turn the mic, uh, mic on.
I, I don't know how to turn this mic on, I'm told it's on. Maybe I'll pull it closer, does that work? Okay. The group that we were meeting with had a, has a strategy, and the strategy is to acknowledge that we've got a problem in Virginia Beach, that we do have, we're a great city, we're a safe city, we're, we have a lot of things going for us, but we do have, and we have had, it's no secret, a long-time issue with, with the, how our black citizens perceive their place in our society. And, and the business and faith and civic leaders want to acknowledge that problem, for starters. They want to confirm that they want to solve the problem, they want to express a desire that the group get larger, that they engage more people and more organizations. They want to organize a symbolic event at the oceanfront, which was conceived as a open arms, as opposed to locked arms, given social distancing, open arms across the beach, and they'll have more details about what they want to do about that, that's kind of a kickoff event, if you will. Their, their intent is to rebrand the city in a way as a city of diversity, openness, and inclusion. We try to brand ourselves that way now, but it's just really more of an emphasis on that point. And they've adopted a art, it started with an, a poster art program that you can, you'll see it's starting to appear online now on some social media, of "Listen, Learn, Love, Black Lives Do Matter." They go on to develop a series of forums to discuss the historical issues that we have. They want to partner with local media to make sure they're aware of what's going on, and develop a social media strategy. They want to work with diversity professionals to help devise a strategy that would make us all understand the need for and the ability that we have to be more welcoming and open to diverse communities. And the reason they want to do that is because of, that's what, we're a city of hospitality, and that's what hospitality is all about. It's being open, it's happening in the corporate world, the business world, and if we want people to come here and, and continue to support our tourism industry in particular, the education of, of people and the need to be more diverse and inclusive is happening in many, many places. And I'm sure many, many of those organizations, whether they be municipal, corporate, or otherwise, a lot of them probably thought, "Well, we are pretty open, we, we, we've done, look at what we've done, look at all the progress we've made, look at the people we've hired." What hasn't been really done, though, is to attack the areas of implicit bias where the system itself has been built in a way that it continues to be an impediment to being open, and that's the idea, is let's, let's look at, look at ourselves, how are we doing, so to speak? So, these folks are going to come before you, and Councilman Ross and I just thought it would be a good idea to give you a little preview, to let you know we had met with these folks. We were very impressed with their sincerity, their desire to make our city better, and they are a bunch of folks in from a number of different communities that have, can, I think can make this happen with some encouragement and help. Thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah. Ms. Wooton.
My comment is a bit different, I just want to ensure, I think we've had a really robust discussion about small businesses and the impact of COVID-19 on those businesses, local and otherwise. And so, on Saturday, June 20th, from 9:00 till about 12:30, the Ignite Business Series will host a virtual series for local businesses, for SWAM businesses as well, and it's entitled "Business Recovery." We will have a special message from Congresswoman Elaine Luria, as well as our mayor, will have a special message that will go forth, but the intent for the program is to put the focus on small business and provide awareness, and programs and resources that are essential to them recovering during this period and beyond. I'm also pleased to, to state that Cox Business is a sponsor of the program, and so, just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, if you'd like to participate online, the information is available on different social media platforms. If you have questions, please let me know.
Okay. Mr. Ross.
And lastly, certainly not least, Mr. Mayor, council, I think we all have been seeing what's been taking place around the country, come considering Confederate statues and Confederate monuments. Here, I think in our city, I think we have an opportunity to, to really show how it's done, you know, to, to do it from a really a, a civil standpoint, and I say that because I've had the fortunate opportunity to kind of be a bridge, to, to see, and so we can mediate the, the immediate concerns of what these statues represent, to, you know, race of people, African-Americans, but also understanding what they meant to those who see this as historical value. And so, being able to be in this position and talk, being able to talk to both sides, I think we come up with a, a solution to be able to remove the statue and, and have it, have it being put on private, private land. I don't know if Councilman Wilson will, wants to say something on that.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Everybody hear me okay? Because we've been working on this all week, last week, and Council Lady Henley, I, I think she, I want her to talk about the site, because she was very, I want you to talk about the site in, in a moment, because I know she was very enthusiastic. I think we've got a really wonderful opportunity with our, with our statue. We've been seeing a lot of things happen across our state where there's been a lot of vandalism and, and anger, but we've got a chance to hopefully bring two very diverse groups together to move this statue. And the good news is, is we've got a group that really wants it, that doesn't mean they're the group that's going to get it, because we have to go through a process. But we have a, we have a group that wants it, and that's the Sons and the Daughters of the Confederacy. They have identified a site that is in a rural area, and I'm going to let Councilwoman Henley talk about it, but we think it's a really great spot for it to go. There's a lot of legal steps that we have to go through that will take a few months probably to get to that point. One is, we have to have the Historical Review Board to look at the appropriateness of this. We have to have a public hearing, we also have to offer it for 30 days to the different organizations, like a museum, a battleground, different historical groups, to see if there's anyone else that would want to take the statue, and then this council as a body would decide who would actually get the statue. But, but the good news is that we, we at least have one plan in place, and we, we know that we can, we can do this, and we want to thank Tom Leahy for covering up the statue last week, and I think we'll keep it that way for a while. I personally would like to see us just take the soldier part down and cover up the pedestal until the decision's made, but that's going to be up to this council to decide, we'll probably be talking about that later. But I think it, it does a couple of things. One is it says, "We understand that this is very offensive to a lot of people, and we don't want to continue this." And, and also, we understand that there are some people who would like to have the statue, so it really meets the needs of two different groups. This does not need to go back to the Historical Preservation Commission, even though, and Michael said on the roundtable, it was looked at for three years. But one thing that I think is really, really important is what happens after this. I think it's really important is, one of the things the Preservation Commission wanted to happen is for that area in front of the courthouse to become a history park. Well, instead of a history park, it should be an area of reconciliation. It should be, this should not be something that should be swept under the rug. We should never forget what happened, and it happened right here, almost across the street from here, that human beings were sold as slaves, right here, and we should never forget that. And the Roundtable had come up with a lot of ideas to have the appropriate signage to tell the story of what happened, and we can create a reconciliation park so people can go and reflect and gather, and I think Councilman Wood hoped at one time that we could turn the old courthouse into some type of museum in the future. But I think just moving the statue is not going to be enough, we need to look beyond that to say, "We're not going to forget what happened, and we need to know that we," I mean, I don't think it's ever going to happen again, but we still need to know what happened. And so, if you want to bring your children and say, "This was," I get really chills thinking about, about this, "This was a history in our country," and history is not always pretty, this was a really deep, dark time in our history, and we never want it to happen again. But anyway, I think this is a, could be a good move, I hope that the council will like this, this opportunity. Like I said, the Historical Review Board's going to have to have it, we're going to have to have a public hearing, there's got to be a time, there's got to be offered up to different groups, and we also, I know E.T. Gresham moved it for the city of Norfolk, we'll have to figure out, you know, get some bids of what it's going to take to move the statue. Fortunately, ours is only 27 feet tall, as opposed to 82 feet that's in Norfolk, so I think it costs $200,000 to move the one in Norfolk, so I don't think it's going to cost quite that much to move it. But the good news is, we recognize that it needs to be off of city property and to put it into a private, private area. So, I, I off of city property and to put it into a private, private area. So I hope the council will, will like this idea. Barbara, did you want to talk about the site?
I don't think it's appropriate to talk about that particular site and name it until something is further along.
But you, I thought maybe in general that it's rural and...
Just that it's a very secluded site, a historical site, because, but I think it's extremely important that any history is researched to be totally accurate. This is a historic site from the standpoint of, I've seen the greatest collection of Indian artifacts from that property that I've seen anywhere, and the owner is very historical minded, but I don't think, and it's very secluded. No one would ever see the site, the statue unless they purposefully went looking for it. So it should not be in a place that would be offensive to anyone, but I don't think that I want to name it publicly at this point.
Well, I think you should name it, but I thought you talked generally about it. Yeah, I didn't expect you to name it, but no one knows that, that area of the city better than you. Pardon?
Anyone else? Mr. Moss?
This is another item, so to make sure that the council's deciding our timeline versus other people deciding one for us, I want to make sure that we consciously are in charge of our own destiny here. This is the timeline for preparing the 2021 General Legislative Agenda Package, and I would hope that this shows that they're out asking, of course, you know, we all have to sign up to sponsor these things. There are no staff proposals. There's only things that we as council members individually sponsor. And I know some people here have mentioned things that they want to do, but it shows the staff is starting their kickoff on June the 12th, which was last Friday, and it says they're gonna have this leadership thing, and I'm sure we'll have a new city manager by then, so that might change the timeline. But it shows us is getting the first draft in September 4th. But my point is, great that the staff's looking for things that they think we should do, but I think we need to provide time on our calendar for the things that we want, and, because this is the city council's legislative package, and we need to make sure that every member here who has something, that we can talk about it, and we can come up with the things we want. And then obviously, there's some staff things we wouldn't think of, but we need to set time on our calendar so that we can talk about those legislative issues that we would like to make sure to be considered and find out what the support of that is, so we're not all trying to do it this rush. Now we got this packet, and now we're, the cart's before the horse, you know, and we're supposed to be the horse. And so I just want to make sure that we don't lose that window of opportunity, Mr. Mayor, and that we set some time aside so that we aren't, that we're in charge versus being led by the staff.
Okay. Mr. Berluci?
I'd just like to take a moment to address some of the conversations that have occurred about symbolism and monuments, and they can be challenging discussions. Indeed, it's a challenging time in our country and here in Virginia Beach, and these conversations can be difficult. But one of the reasons that I was excited about the chance to serve on our city council is to help shape an environment where all of us, everyone, is treated with the dignity and respect that we all deserve as human beings. And I think the conversations that are happening now move us closer toward that goal. And if we're led by thoughts about what unites us and about what our shared common goal and vision are, then I think the path forward will be clear. It's, it'll be easy to do the right thing. But if we're led by what our differences are, or by the political divisiveness of the day, then the path becomes murkier and more problematic and divisive. And so I just want to, for me, I'll say I'll commit myself to be part of the solution, to be part of the dialogue in a positive way that moves us closer to the goal of being a community where all of us receive the dignity and respect that we're all deserving of. And I think that path will become clearer in the days and weeks to come as we have these conversations. And the symbolism and monuments are very important. I make no effort to diminish the importance of them. But it's also important that we think about what policies we can implement to actually create change toward a more equitable community. We've made some great work in implementing the recommendations of the disparity study, moving forward to those, and I think that's great, supporting small women and minority-owned businesses. But we have more work to do in terms of creating economic opportunity for everyone, addressing disparities in our educational system and our criminal justice system, while still acknowledging that we have the greatest police force and that one of the greatest police forces in the country, and men and women who do an extraordinary job serving our community. And building upon our culture of hospitality so that it's not only a great place to live and work for everyone, but it's also a great place for everyone to visit. And we can do it if we work hard together. And I look forward to working on these conversations, not only about the symbols and the monuments, which are very important, but about the public policy to help create a lasting impact on all these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Abbott?
Well, I wanted to say, not as eloquently as Michael did, but similar comments as Councilman Berluci. So I'm, want to just pass on my gratitude to all of you that have been working so hard on this, on these many issues, these many complicated issues, and also extend myself as well in any way that you need assistance from me and, and my district. I also wanted to echo Councilman Moss's comments about the legislative packet, especially considering how many of us are still in our freshman term, so to speak. I know in the three packets I've been through, it has always been a very confusing process. It doesn't always seem like we have clear guidance, and I know the public always feels that way as well. It's just, it's like one day we show up and we have a legislative packet we're voting on. So I would deeply appreciate extra time spent there. That way we can really get an idea of where we're going in terms of what we want the General Assembly to address, especially given all of the new circumstances that we're living in today. So I would love for us to have in-depth discussion on that issue. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Okay, if I just may chime in, you know, I applaud Councilman Ross and Tower for the initiative and anything I can do that might be helpful to bringing the message forward. And I think in lieu of what Councilman Berluci and Abbott also alerted to, that, you know, what policies we might be able to do and come with concurrently as we are engaged in this dialogue going forward, that, you know, discussions in council workshops among ourselves, you know, might be, you know, very, very helpful going forward. But, you know, certainly it's a discussion worth having, and it should, you know, be inclusive of the body. And, you know, moving forward, you know, building those positive bridges going forward and, you know, harnessing that feeling of inclusiveness, diversity, and welcoming is certainly something we should strive for. Just, and, you know, with regard to the monument, we do have an item that we're going to be discussing in close that I'll be reading on shortly. Okay. Is there anybody else? A question from Mr. Stiles. At what point is it inappropriate to bring forward a motion for, you know, reconsideration?
A motion for reconsideration can be brought forward within 30 days of the decision of the body.
Okay, and at what point?
It needs to be brought by a member who voted on the affirmative side.
Okay. And when, when in the process today would that be appropriate?
That could be done in old business. You could...
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, moving forward, if we can go to city agenda review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under ordinances, resolutions, if we have any, anything that people want to pull from consent. I would say Item 16, there's speakers on the corresponding planning item, so I would suggest that Item 16 be heard under, under ordinances, resolutions.
I want to call, call Item 10.
Okay, hold on. 10, got it.
And I, and I have some, a question on Item 5, and a question, and I want to have a, and I want to have a discussion on Item 6.
All right, so you want 5, 6, and 10 heard?
I don't want them heard. I just have, I have, I don't know if this, when we get done, I have a, just a discussion about 6. I just have a question about 5. Is this the appropriate time to ask it?
I read through all the, I'm just trying to make sure that we're, we've been fairly happy with the rules of engagement. That's the terms that I'll use. It's probably not the right one the police department would use, but bear with me. That when we go to other places that don't have the same rules of engagement, don't have the same high standards that we do, how does that work? Or does all our, are all the local police departments that are under these mutual, I don't want our police officers that have one standard of behavior and expectation in our community, and then they're going in another community and they're mutual aid, which generally would be in some kind of probably contentious environment, and some other community has a different expectation or standard of, of engagement. So how, how do we level that out, and how is that addressed? Because that's a, that's a, because the C2 is the people that are in charge. I'm just trying to make sure that we, that our people are always expected to act and perform their duties the same way as they would in Virginia Beach.
I don't know if the, if the chief is in here or not, but...
Unfortunately, he's not. He had to, he had a four o'clock award meeting that he had to go to, so he was here until just a few minutes ago, I think.
I don't want to hold this up, but I would like to have that answer sometime in the future.
Steve, Steve Kovar's here. He might be able to answer.
Steve, thank you.
So generally speaking, when, when our police officers go to another city, they are typically not on the front line. For example, when they went to Portsmouth to assist them. They are like in a reserve type of, of environment. For instance, our, our SWAT members will many times enter into other cities for assist, as, as will other cities come into our city. And those mutual aid agreements and cross-training that takes place prior to those types of events, they're very well regulated, and they've got processes and procedures to interact accordingly.
So if I hear you in trying to read between the lines, I'm trying to get an affirmative binary answer, is that our officers would never be asked to perform in a manner inconsistent with the standards that we practice in Virginia Beach?
No, sir, and that's why, exactly why we send supervision with them.
Okay, just, just for the record, I wanted to make sure that that was clear. It's hard, it's difficult to put people in...
Okay, Ms. Abbott?
May I have a comment on that same question since you brought it up? And Steve, you might, I know that, and I'm guessing the reason is because it's another state, and with police, we have to maybe, they can only do in Virginia.
Yes, sir.
But I'm thinking of the issues of Knott's Island and Blackwater and Gibbs Woods that have the separation with the state. And I know we do fire reciprocation, but, you know, since we have a little corner of Knott's Island that's in Virginia, there's, we don't, we don't do any kind of reciprocal with police?
I, I don't have the exact answer to that. Off the top of my head, I know that we, we, we assist one another. I think the arresting and those sorts of procedures that happen are done by the sheriff of that locality.
I guess a different state makes it a different thing, but, you know, just, I'm just thinking of emergencies when there's an opportunity to assist and...
Certainly we would.
I know fire can, but police can't, huh?
Well, they, they can, and typically they will, they will let the arresting officer be from that locality, is the way I understand it. But I can get that confirmed for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. There was another one on Item 10, Mr. Moss?
Yes, and here, and I'm pulling that, so I'll save my discussion for that.
We're gonna pull that, okay.
I definitely pull that.
Yeah, 16, John.
I did. My question, no, I want to have a question on 6. I understand what we're doing for this budget cycle, and I understand that the General Assembly imposed a tax increase that allows for the redistribution of income across localities, and we're trying to compensate for that in part. But I'm trying to understand that will that practice continue into future budgets, or are we actually, in the next budget cycle, we're going to be paying the $2 million plus our taxpayers are going to be paying on their property transactions? I, I want to make sure we have a discussion, because I'd like this to be a permanent revenue neutral thing. The General Assembly wants to move wealth around, and the governor wants to move wealth around localities. That's great, but I think once you separate income from a customer, the, the provider gets to be very insulated from the marketplace and the customer demands. And I'm not interested in subsidizing larger transit issues that don't benefit Virginia Beach. So I hope we have a discussion on that. That would be a different city manager. But I just want to highlight, I understand the policy that we're adopting, but it looks like in the next budget year, we would be paying the dedicated fee plus the fee for our service.
If, if you don't, you would have to take, and then prior to the next budget year, another round of resolutions, because this one was tailored to a deal with this year only, and that had to do with the fact that all six jurisdictions must adopt the identical resolution, and it was not going to happen with the resolution that had been circulated that would have at least covered several years. So you will either have to address this in the General Assembly before next budget year, or another resolution would have to be passed.
Or provide a notice to reduce our service to compensate for the cost. Okay, I just want to make sure that council really understands that, that the General Assembly and the governor impose a regional tax and impose an additional cost on the citizens of Virginia Beach for a service we barely, rarely use, 1.6%. Okay, want to try to understand that. Question on 14, we just talked about the CARE Act money, and since the payment in Beach Ambassadors was designed to enforce the rules and regulations that go with the pandemic, I would think that that expense would be a reimbursable expense under the thing, because it wasn't provided for in our budget, if we wouldn't be doing this. Am I incorrect?
I believe it is, but if there's somewhat, David Bradley would be more than happy to have him.
You're right, Mr. Moss. It's reimbursable. Part of this is we just needed appropriation authority now to make the payment, and our goal is to reimbursement through the CARES Act.
Well, here's my question, and I'm not an expert, but reading through that language, once we take funds and we move them and make an appropriation, because we're now, we are doing, in effect, a reimbursement, right? That's a double reimbursement. Are you certain that under the, under the treasury regulations and the thing, since we now have made, already made a budget transfer, we, we paid it out of our own money, right? And the idea behind this is this is first dollar, that's generally the purpose behind it, and now we're reimbursing that, so now we'll be asking, when we pay another tip fund, it'll be the tip fund that we're reimbursing, not that? Are you confident that you walk down that legal walkway of reimbursement of a reimbursement, that you have the nexus to still qualify for CARE Act reimbursement? I, I'm not so certain you meet the budgetary test.
I believe we are because of the March 26th or whatever, that we didn't have it budgeted at that time. And in this case, we're just trying to get it in place to make payment. We're literally, but, but, Allison...
Yeah, and the original budget was not for that. And so it's, it, the, it was a substantial different use for that money. So that it will qualify.
If I was an auditor, I'd be asking a lot of questions. And I've already made my comment about the public work design standards admitted last week. I did not get answers to all my questions. I'm tempted to vote no, just because I didn't get answers to all my questions. But I think this council needs to make sure, where is the quality assurance plan that makes these policies mean something versus just words on paper that history has shown we don't?
We're hearing that one. What? We pulled that one?
Okay, I just want, I don't want, I'm not going to comment again, but I've made my point on that.
Anything else people want to pull?
I don't want to pull, but just, I had most of my opportunity to ask my questions or make my comments when we were talking about the other, the disparity issues with SWAM, and I didn't mark it. But I noticed that one of these ordinances requires a quarterly report to council. And I would hope that, you know, with this new office setup, we'll be able to hear about all of it quarterly, not just that one ordinance, and I didn't mark which one it was. But also, I hope we will, and I guess the new reporting system that's going to be coming with the, a new finance plan will allow the reporting to be done better and so forth. I would really like for us to have some conversation about what our purpose is and what our goal is and what we're trying to achieve, not just those numbers of aspiration, but what is the overall intent? I know we mentioned in some of these that we want a better relationship with subcontractors and, and so forth. So if we know what it is we're trying to accomplish, then we'll know when we've reached our goal. And I think our goal is much more than those aspirational numbers. I think we've got overall purposes for doing this, and I would really like for us to have that conversation.
Okay, so we have, and out of ordinances, resolutions, Item 10, 15, and 16 are being heard. Any others that people want to hear?
10, 15, and 16.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, under planning, we have a speaker on every planning item, so I believe we'll do that.
do that. A similar method is to allow her to speak upfront.
Except for number seven, A.
Which we're, we're...
Okay, just wanted to let you know.
We're hearing that one.
Thank you.
So under item I-1, Danny K. and Patricia S. Martin, Brian and Arlene Martin, and Robert and Natalie Faison, conditional, change of conditional zoning from B-2, Community Business District, conditional R-5R, Bayside District.
I'm fine with it.
Take consent. Spence Crossing Properties LLC for conditional change of zoning from conditional B-4 mixed use to conditional PDH-2 in the Centerville District.
Yeah.
You're good with that?
But on that one, when we, after the vote, I do have some observations I would like to make.
Okay. Item three, Gold Pedal Farms LLC, WAVE Church, Recreation and Amusement Facility, Outdoor Nature, Princess Anne?
Consent. I think they probably want more than they're asking for, but they won't be doing it this year anyway, so, okay.
Okay. The next one, item four, Jeffrey Franklin, Gregor and Janine Simon is a commercial kennel, but that's a consent, they request withdrawal. You're okay with that?
We'll certainly allow withdrawal, but I'm assuming, since this is one that said they were already operating, and then they found out they were in, in violation, if they're withdrawing the conditional use permit, that means they're no longer operating.
Is that accurate?
I guess somebody will answer that for me.
I believe the withdrawal is because they were selling the property, but...
Yeah, we received from the property owner that the person is no longer interested in the property for that item. So we will, we will go and inspect just to double check, but we, we received that from the property owner himself.
All right. Item five, Stephanie Guthrie and Jack P. Guthrie, Jr., Residential Kennel, Rose Hall District.
Consent.
Consent. Item six, ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach Convention Plan, JBC Level Wise Adaptation Strategy and Amend, Sections 1.1.
That ought to be a vote all by itself. We ought to have some type of celebration to finally get this adopted, but we'll just let it go as...
Is everybody okay with that?
Regular business, okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess in a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meetings allowed by Section 2.237 11A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of the disposition of public property held where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 3. Beach District, Another Beach District, Princess Anne, and Kempsville. Personnel matters. Discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.237A 1, and that would be appointments. And then legal matters. Consult, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 7, and that's in regard to removal of Confederate monument. Have a motion.
So...
Move second.
Okay.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Okay, we are recessed into executive.